Good evening, welcome to the December 22nd, 2014 meeting of the Medfield School Committee. We actually have a fairly full agenda tonight, so we'll get right to it. We are going to approve several sets of minutes, have a report from the athletic director, approve a couple of generous donations. We have a first reading of three policies which have been updated this year. An initial conversation about the school calendar, superintendent's report, public input, and we'll talk quite a bit about the next year's budget in the superintendent's report. So let's move quickly to minutes so that we can get to the meat of the business.
Okay, I reviewed the March 17th regular meeting and the June 16th executive session meeting minutes and moved that they be reported as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Do we have October 20th?
So I have the October 20th executive session meeting minutes and the regular session of October 20th, 2014. I've reviewed them and moved to accept them as reported.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Dr. Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first order of business is our athletic director's report. Mr. Scott?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming this evening.
I think it's been just over a year since I was here last, so thanks for having me here. If you know me, ask Riley any chance or opportunity that I have to come and brag about our student athletes and our students. I definitely embrace that opportunity, so I just created a little packet here for you that's going to highlight some of the achievements, records, and standout performances for those people that are in the audience and that don't have this in front of them. It's always under the documents section on the Medfield app. Little plug, plug right there. So I leave that up there for a year as well, so you can always find that. But going back, you know, with most recent, this past fall, had a wonderful, wonderful season, probably highlighted by a few teams really having an exceptional year. Football, to name one, or at the top, had a phenomenal year. Finished eight and three, which was their first winning season in the last five years. And just to kind of show the turnaround, we were three and eight last year and finished the season eight and three this year. And had made it to the MIA tournament and had upsets over lower seeded, which is actually a higher seeded, North Attleboro in the first round, then Stoughton High School in the second round before finally bowing out to Walpole High School. But we're still very proud. And Matt Patri, just to name one individual, made Boston Globe and Herald all scholastics, so had a phenomenal year and was recognized for his accomplishments. And I won't just read this word for word, but, you know, girls soccer, finished 12, 3, and 3. Phenomenal year. Boys soccer, 9, 8, and 1 after last season, actually turning around, having a really good rebounding year. Field hockey, 7, 6, and 5. Volleyball, 11 and 10 with an extremely tough schedule. Golf, after losing quite a few All-Stars last year, and actually Coach Callahan rebounding with a 7-11 season, which was actually a very good season for them as well. And then cross country, as you can see there, another Boston Globe and all scholastic, and Austin Scola, who's just breaking all sorts of records this year, so couldn't be more proud of him and their accomplishments. And the next two sheets are just the, both the winter season last year, I think I came right in the fall season, so this is right before the winter, so wanted to, you know, highlight some of those accomplishments as well. Especially boys hockey team, it was our first year moving up from Division III to Division II, so playing in a tougher league with tougher schedule and tougher, and we made it all the way to the Boston Garden and played in the state championship game, which we were heavily an underdog, but played every way as good as Beverly and just came up one goal short. So couldn't be more proud of the boys, you know, in that they played like, you know, they deserved to be there and lost with class and dignity. And like I said, couldn't be more proud of them. Also, swimming and diving grew in numbers, went from about 45 the year before to about 70 last year. That was our biggest jump in any sport for numbers. And actually, just left a swim meet today, so we got the big win over Norton today at the pool over in Denham, so that was very nice. And as you can kind of see down here as well, our girls basketball team had a phenomenal year, finished 20 and 2, and two games shy of a state championship as well. They were probably very disappointed, but it was a great finish to a wonderful class that a lot of them had been on the team for four years. So it was probably bittersweet for them, but couldn't be more proud of their accomplishments. And they had three thousand point scorers last year in the program, two from the girls team, Lauren and Kristen, and one from the boys team, Drew Shays. So great individual accomplishments as well. And then on to the spring, we did have a state championship in the boys lacrosse last spring. Phenomenal year, and as you can see, all those first team, second team, Boston Globe, all scholastics, et cetera, et cetera award, you know, a lot of hard work and perseverance went into that. They had come up short the year before, lost in the state championship game to a very good long medal team, so this was really a great win for those guys, especially the hockey players that just came off with the winter season, coming up a little short. Girls lacrosse, phenomenal season as well, 15 and 3, two games away from the state championship, so they made a really strong tournament run as well. Baseball, little down last year, but had some great individual accomplishments and a couple of games could have gone either way. Softball, best season in recent memory at 12 and 7. And girls and boys tennis, both with really strong seasons. So if you're kind of wondering how we compare to schools our like size, I attached another page for you on the back. And this is the, Boston does the awards for different divisions every year, and we've been lucky enough to win the Dalton Award, which is the highest winning percentage for schools in your size. And we actually won it two years ago, and last year was a quote-unquote "down" year, but I can just show you here that our down years, we still finished fourth last year in that behind schools, Duck Spray ended up winning it, and Westwood, our TVL foe, finished just higher than us. But if you see those winning percentages, we were still right up there with the top. And anything over 500 is amazing, so to be up there in the 60s and 70s, that means you're winning 60-something, 70% of all your varsity contests across all the sports you have, which is an amazing feat. So to be up there every year, again, it's not, doesn't say much about me, but it says things about these student athletes and their level of not only participation, because we have a lot of sports, but the level of achievement in this participation. So it's not just in the classroom, it's actually out in the fields as well. So just want to do, and if you look at different divisions as well, too, in private schools, that those winning percentages really hold up there with all the top schools in the states. So again, very proud of our student athletes. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you need anything from us?
Eventually, but not today. But thank you so much.
We've been talking about that, thank you.
Thanks, Eric, appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Marsden.
Mr. Chair, and members of committee, we have a donation approval this meeting as well. Leaders Environmental has historically given the district a check for $125, so I would ask that you support this. It goes to the general fund of the school department, and we just appreciate their generosity each year. I would ask that you approve this donation.
Any questions?
Same.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Well, thanks. Thank you very much.
Policy revision. So we have a first reading this evening of three policies. As you know, we have worked with Andy Waugh, our attorney, to go through our policy manual and start to revise some of the policies that are in place. There is a subcommittee with Sullivan and Sister Sisto and I, and we look at the policies and make recommendations based on what Mr. Waugh has given us. So the first three are the non-discrimination harassment policy, the quarry policy, and executive session policy. In your packet were copies of the existing policy and then the revised policy that was written by Mr. Waugh and reviewed by the subcommittee with a recommendation of the school committee to approve as our new policy. So just, you know, a couple of highlights I won't go through because of many pages, but I think one of the most important things we did with the non-discrimination policy and grievance procedure was bring that up to date. There's been changes in the law since the last time it was revised in the district, so I think Mr. Waugh did a nice job reviewing all that. What we need to do before you have a final vote is add in the contacts. So you'll see that in some of the policies that says district contact, et cetera, name, title, address, phone number. We just have to add that information in before you vote on it and make it official. So district contact on some of these, I'll be that, or one of the principals, or Matt Lakava. So we just have to add that particular piece, but I don't know if you have any questions at all regarding that, but I think it's pretty comprehensive and brings us up to where we need to be in terms of the current law for our policies.
Review, I didn't have any questions, anybody else have questions on the non-discrimination policy?
Pretty straightforward when you compare the two, I think, you know.
Yeah, there was a lot missing from them.
Right. The second one was the quarry policy. Again, there's been some updates in the law since the last time that was written as a policy in the district, and Mr. Waugh made some recommendations. One of the things that he added in there was a link for someone that if they choose to get items removed from their quarry, the way they can do that, that's now required to be in a school committee policy. Also updated, the quarry law advisory that came out in May of 2007, so that was another update that needed to be in there as part of this process. Again, it's pretty straightforward, just updating to the most recent information that needs to be in a quarry law for a school department. Anyone has any questions on that one?
Even as a lawyer, I found it legalistic.
And the last one, again, is just an update on executive session. The law did change on that a few years ago on reasons of why you can go into executive session, and they gave much clearer explanations of what you can do with that. So that was what Mr. Waugh updated us with that and made that appropriate so that we're now in compliance with the law on an executive session piece. Again, fairly straightforward when you compare the two, what needed to be agreed. One other thing, too, I mean, I think most of you know that I'm friends with Jim Hardy, and I spoke to him a couple of weeks ago about something else, and he mentioned to me that we can go on the MASC website, get a login, and they can give us exactly what policies we need to look at. So couple that with what Andy Waugh's doing, might be a nice way for us to do that. So I want to contact him and see if he can give us a login, because he represents you folks and we pay fees to be a part of MASC, so we'll get logins and that way we can go through and get that, which I think will be helpful.
We have that login information.
Okay, all right, so that would be helpful.
As these are updated, we're working to put these all online, right?
Right. So there's a couple of things. So in my former district, we put it all online, and we did it as a scanned document, so they could go online, it's huge, and you have to go through, there's a table of contents where you can scan through. What MASC does is they make it a live document, and there's a fee to it, so we can look at that maybe for the next fiscal year, where you can just go online and search exactly what you want for a policy, click on it, there's a live link, and it pops right up. So it's pretty user-friendly. I mean, it really takes away the huge binder we have and makes it all electronic, so I'll look at the price on that, too.
Yeah, actually, that came before us, probably two years ago, maybe even three years ago, and we concluded at the time that it would be, it seemed like a lot in order to accomplish. Maybe not anymore, but if you put it all in one PDF and had somebody who knew what they're doing with Adobe create links in the table of contents that would bring you to them, we may be able to accomplish it with it. I don't know. I mean, I don't know how big the document is and how big our servers take up. I just remember it was at the time, in that fiscal climate, it was pretty expensive, so...
Okay. If you look at, if you go on their website, they have a list of all the districts that do it through them. So like Westwood is a local one, and I think Walpole does it as well, so just click on there, you can find all their policies right online, right there. So that would be a link right on our website, a live link, click on that, and you could get access to every single policy we have there. So it might be worth looking into that and seeing. Think about, we saved a lot of money when we did the website this year. So that was going to be, you know, $30,000 for an outside company to do that, the same one the town uses. We tried to get a deal because they had the town, but it was still about $30,000 to redo that website. We did that in-house. So, you know, we can certainly look at doing this in-house as well, but if we have to pay a little bit for that, we saved a lot on the website.
Yeah, and the table of contents for the policies is incomprehensible for anybody. These are just for information, we vault them at the next meeting, which is the second week of January, right?
Right.
And then the subcommittee's got others they're bringing forward for a first reading at that same meeting.
Right. We'll probably have another four or five on that one. So the school calendar, I know we talked a little bit about that last time. We're still looking at it as a leadership team, and we're trying to decide what the best course of action is for professional development days, but I'd be curious if you had any thoughts on start date, because I was a little surprised by the reaction of the leadership team wanting to start even earlier than we talked about the last time, which I don't think is probably going to be positive in the community, starting any earlier than what we had talked about at our last meeting. So I want to just kind of get a sense of where you guys are before we bring it at the January meeting with a more fixed date for starting and then professional development, that kind of thing.
Like how much earlier, what do they think?
So we had talked about starting the teachers on the 31st and doing the 31st and the 1st of September for teachers, kids coming on the 2nd. They were looking at teachers coming the week before that and the kids starting on the 31st. So having the teachers come in on Wednesday, Thursday of the previous week.
And Labor Day's the 7th this year?
Labor Day is really late. So having the teachers come the week before, but have the students start on the 31st, which is a Monday. So have them go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Right.
And then have the four-day weekend.
That's aggressive.
Yeah, I thought it was a little aggressive.
So we were starting originally on the 1st, right, which was a Tuesday?
Teachers, the 31st and 1st, and students on the 2nd.
So it's just two days early if we start on the 31st.
But it's also the teachers the week prior.
I think, because you're going to have to bring kids, I mean, most families are going to probably come back that weekend.
Anyway.
Anyways, if they're starting on Wednesday, the 2nd, starting them on 31st isn't going to be that bad, other than the shock of starting in August.
But when would we end school then? Because I thought if we had started the 2nd, that would bring us with snow days to something obscene like June 27th, 29th, right?
It goes late, yeah. I think it goes to the, I think it goes to 27th, 22nd, and then it was the 27th maybe of the days or something.
Yeah.
I didn't bring that.
See, that's just awful.
Yeah.
But this year, we started in August, right?
We did. We did.
I tend to agree with Mary Ann that it's, once you get on the other side of that weekend, at least speaking for myself as a parent, it doesn't really change the analysis, whether it's Monday or Wednesday. In fact, having them sitting at home with nothing to do for Monday, Tuesday, may be more trouble than, more mischief anyway than it's worth, but... So, Eric, does the committee have any other?
I don't know. I think to go back to a four-day week might be tough right off the bat, but, I mean, something to think about certainly, and I'd be interested to see what all the teachers think about it, you know.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting with the teachers yet, because we're still trying to work out the days with the professional development leadership team, so I'll notify the leadership of reunion prior to our next meeting and sit down and go over what their thoughts are as well.
Yeah. So is your, so far, the preliminary stuff that they want to get out earlier, too, by starting earlier in August?
Right.
Right. See, that's the thing, is it sounds awful to come back in August, but it sounds worse to get out closer to July 4th.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? And everyone hates the sound as it gets closer to getting out for summer, but...
And a lot of camps start that last week of June.
Right. So that is really difficult for families, and so many families have, they start booking camps and stuff now. So for families, you know, they start kind of banking on that time.
I've already gotten emails from parents asking me, because they're trying to plan late summer vacations, and they don't want to plan it if we're going to come back at a certain time, so...
What is our deadline to approve the calendar?
I mean, I think last year it was February, you folks did it, so we certainly have some time to look at that and get some more feedback, but...
Because we're going to look at professional development days and also maybe some of the, like, the day before Thanksgiving, or whatever, those days within the calendar now that has been traditional. All right, cool.
So we'll just wait a little bit, and then at the next meeting, I'll have some more information, feedback from the teachers.
Yeah, I think we've got some feedback.
Okay. All right, good, thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Sure. So my first item, it's still up there, that's good, it's not showing up very well back there, is the FY16 initial budget presentation, so Mr. Chair, I'd like to go up there and just go through that a little bit, and we'll certainly answer any questions the committee has.
Medfield Public Schools' initial FY16 budget, on behalf of students, administrators, teachers, and staff of the Medfield Public Schools, that's the part you can't see, so hopefully it, it's still kind of dark, but... So the process to date, and you know that this starts fairly early for us, our leadership team established priorities for the schools and districts in terms of what we want to look at budget-wise. Principals and content specialists develop budgets, so the principals for their building, content specialists for their area. Superintendent, Director of Finance met with the principals and content specialists to review requests, and this is something that we have a lot of great dialogue during these meetings. So they bring their requested budget to us, we sit down, and we talk about what the needs are for the department of the school and have some really good dialogue around that. Superintendent, Leadership Team, we met to review the budget request, excuse me, the War Committee held a meeting for all department heads to communicate the FY16 expectations. We sometimes refer to this as the doom and gloom meeting, where the expectations are, and every town has it, not just Medfield, we all have the doom and gloom meeting, and just talk a little bit about what that input and what the expectations are. Then we went to review the budget requests with the leadership team, and then we met with the War Committee in our initial meeting, so just kind of get a sense of what they're thinking and where we are in terms of our budget. And then Michael and I developed the budget that we're going to present to you folks, which we'll get into a lot more detail as we did last year at this time. We do the initial first in December and then the more detailed budgets in January and beyond. So our priorities that we had going into FY16, certainly high academic achievement for all students is one of our overarching goals we look at, so we want to maintain and enhance our current staffing levels and programming. So it's, what you would look at is a level service budget, where same people, same programs, same everything, and with a few enhancements in terms of additional positions. Excellence in teaching and leading, remain committed to our professional development priorities we have in district. So we've worked a lot on technology over the last few years, implementing and teaching with technology. The elementary staff has worked really hard on implementing math and using Common Core instruction in mathematics, we want to continue that commitment to professional development. Technology for all students and staff, continue what we're doing for technology and expand that. So this budget, this FY16 proposal, has additional funding in there because we're going to be really transparent with middle school parents on whether or not they agree with purchasing iPads or not, but being transparent in the sense that they have the option, that if you are philosophically against buying an iPad for your child to use, then we will purchase one for you, and if there's a financial situation there, then we'll certainly purchase one for you. But I think being a little more open with that communication, I think in the past we've talked about the financial need, but not the philosophical need. I met with some parents when I first got here two Julys ago and had that conversation with them, and I think we just need to have that openness, that with the caveat that, you know, there's going to be a certain number of people that do purchase them for their child, or the program really can't have them, because we can't buy iPads at this time for all of our kids.
Jeff, how many of the original, I think it was three years ago, we started with 200 that we bought, how many of those are still?
They're all still in circulation. They're all still in there. So they're different levels. We have some families that financially couldn't afford it and others that just philosophically thought that we should be providing that for them. So, you know, and then the teachers have them as well, and then some of the other schools have those. The other thing that we're looking at doing through this FY16 budget is providing every senior next year a Chromebook. One of the things that we've seen in high schools that we've visited in some of the research we've done is that kids junior and senior year are using Chromebooks a little bit more in high school because they're preparing them for college, and we're seeing a lot of kids with laptops in college and in the BYOD environment. So a Chromebook that we provide for those students will help them bridge that gap from going to high school and to college, and a Chromebook is a much lower cost machine than buying a laptop. The second piece of the Chromebook is that if the Department of Ed and the state of Massachusetts goes to a park assessment, we need to have our own machines that we own for those assessments to take place. So if we own them, we have greater control over what we can do for the park testing. You know, some of the feedback that I heard a parent was talking to me about, some concerns with the iPad. You know, we don't own the iPads, so we don't have a lot of control over that, so if a child downloads apps at home and they have them on their computer at school, on their iPad at school, we can't control that. However, if we own them, we control everything. Many districts around here that provide the devices for students, even the email they send goes through the software in the Sonic Wall at the school before the child can even read it at home. So they have all these protections in there that we currently don't have for our kids with iPads. We have it when they're here, when they're home, it's their device. It becomes extremely problematic during the park testing because we would have to get permission from every parent that owned an iPad to actually take over ownership for two to three days while the testing takes place. And we have to wipe out everything that's on that iPad and then put on the apps that the Department of Ed wants to put on. It's crazy. So other places, Burlington did it this past year and tried it out, and they shared all the issues with a lot of the superintendents that went to them. So it's really problematic when you don't own the devices. So we have labs currently where we could do them, but we also want to get a set of Chromebooks to do that as well. And this, the current 11th grade next year senior class would be the one class that has not had BYOD in their years in high school, so we want to make sure that we provide them with that device in their senior year so that they can have that prepare them for college and going forward. Early childhood education and elementary education was a priority in the budget. Again, expanding full-day kindergarten next year, tuition-based program, we're expanding it because we have projected 40 more children in kindergarten next year. So I think that's the real reason for the expansion. We anticipate having slots for 140, 245 kids next year, and then two sections of half-day. Preschool, our elementary principal, memorial principal, and special education director did a survey recently of parents. Parents are telling us they want a longer school day in preschool. Probably our next meeting or the meeting after, they'll be here, do a presentation for you to kind of get a sense of what your thoughts are, but they want to present a longer school day for preschool, because we have lots of parents that have their kids in a two-day half-day program here, and then they're in two other private ones around town. We want them to be in our district and our school all the time. So they're asking for a longer than two-hour and 15-minute day for the three-and-four-year-olds, so we're going to look at that as well. And then the focus on the curriculum, so some of the issues that, you know, we've looked at the last year or so is elementary math is a little bit of a concern, because a couple of schools are doing it one way, a third school is doing it a different way. We have really no organized, structured, science curriculum that we really need to work on, and that's something that we have to focus on. There's something called FOS Kits out there, which is a great science curriculum for elementary. I think our kids should be doing that, and we need to look at that and focus on the curriculum piece in elementary. And then increase our revenue generation through tuition fees and grants. So again, we're projected to bring in, you know, over $300,000 in tuition this year, and when we get into the real details, I know the War Committee will want to see this as well, we'll show you what the three areas of the budget are. So you'll see the state allocation through Chapter 70, you'll see the local contribution, and then you'll also see what we're generating and what we're putting in the budget as well. So if you look at, our budget currently is over $29 million. It really costs about $31 to $32 million to run the district. So all the outside monies with grants, tuitions, anything that the local organizations give us, whether it be PTO, coalition, CSA, MMA, all the groups that give money to us, all that adds up to a heck of a lot more than the $29 million. So we'll show you that in the next presentation. And then grants, we're pretty good with grants. We've gotten some grants for foreign language, we have special education entitlement grants, all those kinds of things, so we'll get into detail when we get into that in January, but just to give you a sense of what priorities were. So the assumptions that we made, we built this budget that our federal entitlement grants are going to be level-funded, so a lot of that is special education grants, that Chapter 70 we level-funded. We made this assumption last year, and Massachusetts came through with $25 more per student, which added out to be about $68,000 additional money in Chapter 70 money this past year. We feel that enrollment is going to decrease slightly, about 1%, and we've used our NESDEC projections on this, even though we have a big class coming in for kindergarten, overall pre-K through 12, we're looking at a decrease of 1%. Expansion of the tuition-based programs, we built that in the budget so we can offset the cost of teachers in kindergarten and preschool with the tuition that we get. And then circuit breaker would be funded at 65%. Remember, circuit breaker is that money that we get in a reimbursement from the state that we get in a reimbursement from the state once we hit a threshold of costs on a particular special education case, so it's 41,000 this year, Michael? Is it a threshold, or 30,000? 41,000 is the threshold, so anything we spend over 41,000, we get a reimbursement, we're right now planning on 65%, it's been as low as 42, it's been as high as 75, so we thought 65 was a pretty safe bet at this point, and we can adjust that like we did last year as we go along through the budget process. So, some of our budget drivers that we have for this year, certainly our instructional personnel cost, I think any school budget you see across the country, you're gonna see about 80, 85% is in personnel, so we settled three of our contract collective bargaining agreements, and then we have ongoing with Unit A and the teachers. This is something that we've talked about now for over a year, some of the budget corrections that we have to make, we've made them all in this budget that we've done, so there's that structural deficit that's been there for four or five years in athletics, that's about $80,000, we correct that in this budget. There's collective bargaining liabilities with extracurricular stipends that have never been budgeted, that's about 73,000, we corrected that here, and then our food service numbers, you know, we've talked about these for the last year and a half as well, where we've taken operation money of over $100,000 in the last few years to bring food service back up to zero. I'm happy to report that, you know, with the new director and the great work that she's doing, that at this, we're 28,000 ahead of where we were at this time last year, and I think that speaks to what we're serving in the cafeteria, and certainly kids are getting excited about different choices, but these three budget correction areas are really important, and I'll get into that a little bit later, we're talking about in the neighborhood of $200,000 to make those corrections. In terms of transportation, we're in year two of the three-year contract, with special education, we have in-district, out-of-district transportation program development, and, you know, certainly we just got a recent ruling from the Department of Ed that puts us on the hook for a very large outside district placement that we're working on now, we're gonna appeal that, but as of right now, we're on the hook for a very, very large outside of the district, when I say large, I'm saying, you know, north of 300,000, so that's something that we need to plan for, and we'll see what comes out of our appeal.
For how many, about how many years is it with that running the budget, assuming that we lost the appeal and the students stayed in that placement?
Five. I just don't wanna give away with the...
I, that's why I said about, yeah, I got you.
So, professional development, continue our commitment, I think we've done a really nice job here with professional development, focusing on some of the areas that we need to improve on, with teacher and administrative quality, great stuff with technology, great stuff with math, continue to focus on that, we're doing a lot of work, which I'll share in the district. My last item on the agenda today, well, I'll talk about some of the great work that the administrators have been doing with educator evaluation, and that's all part of the professional development piece for administrative quality. Technology, continue our current initiatives, infrastructure, hardware, et cetera, expansion of one-to-one, which I just talked about, and then down here, hopefully, if you can't see it, health insurance costs, you know, it doesn't show up on the school side of the budget, but it's certainly a budget driver, I mean, the more health insurance costs go up, it impacts the amount of money that the town can give in local contribution, so we recognize that, we know that's an important piece, I'm hearing stories from my superintendent colleagues of folks that are in a consortium of health insurance that their costs are going up next year 10 to 15%, and essentially all the money that folks, that districts are getting, or towns are getting from the levy, are going right to health insurance, so it's certainly a problem nationwide and definitely in our state, fortunately, we're not in that consortium of organizations, but it is a lot of districts around here that are in that, but we recognize that that is a budget driver for the entire town, not just, it's not just a town issue, it does become a school issue as well. So, FY 15, and you saw a lot of stuff here that, in the next slide, we'll go into what this accomplished, but there's a lot of things that gets done in this FY 16 budget, and you'll see the increase of 5.4%. Now, 5.4%, and I know that, you know, understanding the culture of this town, that is a huge number in the town of Medfield, I'm here to tell you that if you go in other places, it's not a huge number, it's just not, but that is a big number here, level-service budgets in towns of Massachusetts increase from 5 to 7% routinely every year, and we understand that we have a requested cap of 2.5%, but I think it's important also to see what we really need as a district right now, and what, frankly, it's a little bit more than this, but we cut it down to 5.4% because we didn't want Gus to fall over at our meeting, so we had 5.4% instead of the number that was a little bit larger.
I was trying to lull it some time.
So, what does this 5.4% do? It maintains our current staffing programs, includes steps and lanes and cost of living increase, so just to give you a sense of what that looks like, based on what we had negotiated, and it didn't get ratified, but what we negotiated last year with the teachers, just that alone is a million-dollar increase, so that's steps, lanes, and cost of living, that's a million dollars, just steps and lanes alone in our budget, $600,000 next year, that's a big chunk of what we're talking about. Corrects the budgeting issues that we talked about, increases the funding for technology, funds professional development priorities, expands both preschool and full-day kindergarten, so here's a couple of the items, so these are the 2.5 positions that are different from what we have this year, so the 0.5 elementary gifted and talented teacher. So, last year, Mr. Morrison said that he's looking forward to budgets that have my stamp on them, so here's one of them, okay, in my former district, felt it was really important at the elementary level to identify the top 1 or 2% of kids in a particular grade in an area, it could be mathematics, it could be art, it could be language arts, whatever it is, identify those kids through testing, and sometimes a battery test, and use the same model we use for special education, but use it for those students that need additional challenges, and you create a plan for those kids, and you have a team meeting with parents and teachers, and you do the same model that we already have in place for special education, but to do it for kids, they need to be stretched a little more, and I have to tell you, it worked extremely, extremely well, and we're talking about the 1 or 2%, that's all we're talking about, we're not talking about the really smart kid that, you know, my kid's the smartest kid in the world, we're not talking about that, we're talking about those kids that are truly gifted in a certain area, and then we make sure that we program specially for them, those kids are difficult to teach in a classroom, and giving them additional work, giving them, here you go Tutor Johnny, is not stretching their learning, it's not bringing them to their potential, so focusing in on those kids in the elementary level and having someone to work with them and provide programming and structure for them, in my mind, is really important for us. The other piece is 0.5 high school nurse, it's amazing, if you look at the data, how many contacts our high school nurses have with kids every day, I believe it was last year in total 36,000, so that means someone's stopping in for a Band-Aid, someone's stopping for medication, someone's stopping to get their blood tested, they have diabetes, they are out straight constantly, and we have two half-time people doing it right now, it's in my mind, it's a safety issue, when you look at the data on what, how many nurses should be in a school of that size, you probably should have two full-time, but we're gonna ease in with another part-time, with a part-time person, so we have, because one of the part-time folks is retiring, we'll have one full-time person and one half-time person in the high school nurse's office, I think it just makes total sense. The days of having nurses that share a go-between buildings, those are long gone, we put nurses on field trips now, we do all of that work because our kids have allergies, we wanna make sure our kids are safe, that's the number-one thing, I think this is a really important thing, these positions in my mind are so important that I would recommend to the school committee as we go through this process and we have to pare things down, that we pare down something existing to put these in, I mean, they're that important that I think we need to do for our district and for our kids. It also maintains increased hours that we have for technology staff, we did some of this work, this is summer work, we extended some time with the secretaries, the elementary secretaries, another week, so they're not just coming back the week before the kids come in, a lot of work gets done during the summertime with technology, additional days for those folks, so that's a really important thing that we did for efficiency this past summer, it really worked well for us, we wanna keep that in there. And then, it eliminates one section of grade three, so if you remember, last year, we did grade two, eliminated one section at Wheelock, so we're gonna eliminate another section at Wheelock, but grade three this time, so now we're looking at eight sections, and eight sections, so 16 sections total at Wheelock, and again, this is moving up, so, you know, one of the things that, you know, when folks talk about, well, why can't, if we're losing 100 kids, then why doesn't the budget go down, well, it's not 100 kids in one grade level, they're spread out over, you know, 13 grades, so as we find ways to do that, if the numbers tell us, then we eliminate, so next year, we're looking at eliminating one at the year after, at Dale Street, and then so on, so we'll keep eliminating one as we go along unless the population changes, but I think we're not just looking at it and saying, okay, we're just gonna keep everyone employed, I think we're making the changes based on what our enrollment is telling us, but it's not as easy as just knocking off grade levels because the kids are spread out throughout the entire district.
With 45 more kids expected in kindergarten, we're gonna have to start, next year, that'll be caught by tuitions, but the year after...
Year after, we'll have to add another section of first grade, right. So, when we had our meeting with the Warren Committee, one of the members had a really good question, we talked about the budget corrections, and one of the things that the Warren Committee member said was, you know, Jeff, all these years, it's, you know, we worked it out, you know, at the end of the year, it all came to zero, and everyone was happy, and it all worked out, and even though you have these deficits, why should we fund these corrections, like, what's the big deal? Great question, but I think it's important to understand that what I share here are the results, so what have we not done as a district because of this budgeting and doing the transfers and doing that kind of thing, and I think it's important, I think it's fairly compelling list here of things that we haven't done that we should really focus on, and that, to me, gives you the impact of doing it this way. So, we have no new elementary math and science curriculum, I mean, that's really important, I think for the last four or five years, this has been a request, science is the last couple of years, but really something that we should look at and consider. Our parents purchase iPads and devices for middle and high school kids, again, that's what we do here, sometimes you gotta ask, why do we do it this way and no one else does, that's certainly an issue. No ceiling-mounted projectors in elementary classrooms, so none of these, there's only a couple in elementary classrooms, our middle school, high school, they have them all, but our elementaries are using technology, and they don't have this particular piece, which is an important part of it. We didn't have any Wi-Fi in elementary classrooms until September of this year, which we accomplished over the summer, no preschool to grade-five coordinators of math or science, we have content specialists in the older grades, we don't have anything, any coordination of math or science in the elementary grades, no overnight stipends in the budget, this is really a middle school issue, so if you are, and parents have told me this, when you have an eighth grader Blake, you're spending a lot of money, because there's trips, and there's iPads to buy, because the overnight stipends that have been put in the budget, that cost gets passed on to parents, so if we're paying teachers whatever the stipend agreed upon in the contract is for overnight trips, that gets put into what parents pay, you know, so my former district, that was all put into the budget so that we didn't deal with that with the parents, we thought it was important, we put it in. Costs that are normally part of a district's budget are passed on to Coalition, CSA, PTO, our Coalition spent $75,000 on iPads last year, our Coalition and CSAs and PTOs spent thousands on professional development, I think that's our responsibility, I really do, and other groups have been paying for that, and that's great, and we appreciate all the hard work they do, but in my mind, they should be enriching our kids, not buying the things that we should be buying as a district. I looked at the Coalition's list this past year, you know, they did some great stuff on performing arts, some great things, extending student learning at all different levels, some interesting training for kids, that's enrichment, I mean, that's what a Coalition, that's what a foundation does. iPads and all that, if we're already using them as a district, doesn't that seem like something that we should be doing as a district? It does to me. High school fitness area, equipment and maintenance and replacements, so there's been money earmarked for that for the last few years, and hasn't been a lot done there, the high school auditorium soundboard, we have an outside group that uses our auditorium, they let us borrow their soundboard, because our soundboard's not working. And then, you know, something that I've talked to you about before, and certainly, if Tim were here, he could speak to it too, is the high school security cameras, I mean, it's something that I think is everywhere now and something that we need to do, and we got a grant last year to pay for them to pull some of the wires, but we're just, right now, we're using facility money, hopefully soon, to put in a battery of cameras around the high school on the outside and the perimeter, I mean, it's a wonderful town, it's a great town, we have great kids, but stuff still happens, it still happens, and, you know, we don't have cameras around the outside of our building, we need to have that, we have cameras at the door, but we don't have cameras around the outside of both, and we should be able to do that. So, that's just a small list of what came to mind from the leadership team, we had a conversation about, okay, so what have you been putting in for the last four, five, three, four, five years, and just kinda gets knocked off, or things that were earmarked that just, the money just wasn't there by the end of the year because we're transferring from all different places to pay for all that stuff that we talked about in the budget, the athletics and all the other things. So, in terms of capital requests for FY 16 and 17, so these are things that the capital committee will bring forward, and we're not sure how we're structuring this yet, that's why we put them together, the Wheelock boilers, obviously, that's a definite one for this year, and we'll get 40% reimbursement through MSBA, and we're estimating that to be between 300 and 400,000. Townwide field study, had a great meeting with some folks last week to take a look at that and try to get the youth groups in to fund a field study, we're estimating that to be at 50,000, we wanna really work with the youth groups so that we all can contribute to that field study, because it's a town-wide issue, it's not just a school issue. The turf field replacement, you know, 750 just to do the high school turf, and the 1.5 would be to put practice fields in, whether it's at Metacomit or behind the middle school or somewhere, but to give additional, you know, fields. When I met with Doug, we talked about band uniforms in his budget meeting, he told me the last time band uniforms were purchased, he said 25, but it could be as many as 40 years ago, and he and I had a conversation because I had been to an event at Gillette Stadium, and they were showcasing high school marching bands, and they all had these gray uniforms, and they were all sitting there, and they were all different sections with different colored uniforms, so I talked to him about it after the weekend, and, because they always have the black jackets and the black pants, he said, oh, that's what we have, and so he put that in his budget, and we thought it made sense to be part of the capital budget because it's something that's gonna last longer than five years, and it's certainly at $45,000, it's not a cheap item. And then the security school updates, we, Michael and I have worked with Owen to try to get some of the security updates, if that's card access, that's everything, and that's something that we know probably isn't gonna be on FY 16, but we'll put it on FY 17 and take a look at, we're looking at maybe 80 to 110,000 on that, and that provides additional cameras, and the card access is something that a lot of schools have now, so that you have it computerized, there's no keys, and if a staff member can be in the building from 6:00 AM to 6:00 at night, then their card doesn't work, so it's just, it keeps track of access of buildings, and, you know, if we were building a new high school today, we'd have all of that, no doubt about it, but now to retrofit, you look at some of the costs there, and again, Tim's a great resource, that's what he does for a living, managing these projects, and he gives us some information on this as well.
Jeff, can I ask a question about the capital? There are two items that, at least I can remember, that we've had my entire time on the committee that aren't on here, and maybe they're just lower priorities, but the Wheelock driveway and parking lot has been on, and it's been kicked down, down the road for a while, and then the other one is the middle school auditorium, which I think is effectively unusable, I think the only time I ever stepped foot in there, despite having had kids at the middle school for three years, is for pin night.
Yeah, and Matt really wanted that on this list, because I know that's been earmarked a couple of times to have different, have the painting, have the seats repaired, so that's definitely on there as well, these are some of the big-ticket items that we looked at, you know, going forward for the next couple of years, but they certainly will make it on there, I'm just not sure where they're gonna be, I think we looked at, the year before I left my former district, we did a similar paving, and I think it was around 95,000, and it was probably a similar area too.
Right.
So, I think that's part of the issue, is that it's, we actually worked with our DPW, and they did a lot of that prep work for us, they pulled it all out for us, and a paving company came in and just did it, so we can certainly put that on, those two projects on, and it makes sense. So, our next steps as we go forward, we're meeting with the Warren Committee on the 8th, we have school committee meetings on the 12th and the 26th, public hearing due the 26th, so we'll have that, we'll open up the meeting as a public hearing on the budget, then ongoing meetings with the Warren Committee and town officials as we go through this process, I think I remember saying last year that it's a really aggressive timeline, but I'm used to it now, last year, I was kind of shocked because I'm used to a June 7th or 8th town meeting, not in April, but I think that, you know, Michael and I and the leadership team worked really well together to get this timeline down, I think we're in pretty good shape, but certainly, there'll be lots of conversation as we go through this process, but I'd be happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Thanks, Jeff.
Also?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
We'll give you a minute to get resituated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, our next item, Elementary School Day Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next item, Elementary School Day Committee. I sent you the minutes that we got from our meeting. I thought we had a really good meeting, a good group of people, wide variety of backgrounds and certainly interests. So there were some things that came out that we tried to do was talk about brainstorm what the issues are. So what are some of the issues that we see with the current elementary day? And then what are some of the solutions we could have? And I thought it was great conversation. We did it in about an hour and a half or so. We have another meeting coming up in January. And I don't know if you wanna add anything, but I thought, I thought it was a pretty productive meeting for the person.
Yeah, no, I agree. And the parents that I've spoken to since just felt, they brought up a wide variety, as you said, of issues, and they felt that that was a good place to voice these things. So they feel good about the potential that can come out of this.
And the homework that was assigned was really looking at other districts and kinda get a sense of what their school day looks like and compare it to ours. And then see, we'll get to the point where we're looking at schedules, but right now, we're just trying to get an overview of what that, what that might look like in terms of hours in a day.
And it was great to have the teachers, administrators, and parents all at the table speaking together.
It's a good group.
Yeah.
So where are you going from here? You have a meeting in January and...
Meeting in January, so we'll look at, you know, some of the homework, bring that back, and then just get a sense, maybe have some subcommittee work as well. And I probably shouldn't have put this lifesaver in my mouth, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, my throat is really dry. And just kinda go, we're gonna develop a survey in the spring. And we're probably gonna partner with a company that does surveys professionally, that does educational surveys professionally, and help us out with that. So I think that'll be a good start as well. And look at it more, I think we talked about it in one of the meetings here, not just an elementary day survey, but a survey of a lot of different things. You know, certainly the Dale Street pilot, the elementary day, the high school, middle school day, just kinda put it out there to all of our parents and get a sense of where they're at.
Are you talking about the bus schedule?
Bus schedule, all of that.
And so the goal is to get something, you know, hopefully finalized by the end of the school year?
Yes. Yeah, so our goal would be to, and we framed it around, you know, we wanna have a recommendation or recommendations that come out here of this group that allow us to have enough time to do the core teaching and learning in the district, but also preserve the programming that we value. You know, to make sure that we can have that balance of both. And the consensus in the initial conversation was about extending the day. I mean, I think people were pretty strong about extending the day a half hour. That would be a good, a good solution, so.
The teachers and the committee as well.
I felt that way. They feel a little frustrated, rushing around and trying to teach what they need to teach and not really comfortable with the fact that our kids are learning what they need to learn because they feel like there's a lot on their plate and not a lot of time to do it.
But ultimately, is the, is the goal not only to have recommendations, but maybe to make some implementations at the start of the academic year next year?
That's what I would like.
In theory, yes, good.
There's a lot to bite off between now and...
It is. But it's a good group. I mean, people are very motivated and I think it can be done.
Thank you. And Tim's on that subcommittee with you.
He is.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, we also have the Dale Street principal search timeline. I think we're gonna look at a similar timeline to what we did in Memorial search, where we advertised in mid-January and usually have, and have the candidates have their information in by probably right after February vacation, and then start interviews in March and hopefully have an appointment before April vacation. That worked well last year doing that schedule.
Have you already started to put together a committee for that? I may have missed that makeup.
I have not, no. So I'll ask two members of school committee. We'll get parents. I'll have a committee member. I know Chief Meaning would wanna do that. I'll have him on there and some other folks. But I'll put that letter out like I did last year, inviting parents to join that committee.
Great.
And then my last item, Mr. Chair, is the district recognition. I just wanted to acknowledge the work that the administrators and the content specialists are doing right now. We started working with a consultant in the beginning of the year to really look at the education evaluation and work together with that. So there's a common understanding of what, when we look at proficient, we wanna know what proficient looks like. We all have that agreement. So we've had some really good meetings. We've had four or five sessions now. And those sessions are about looking at videos of teaching, all of us evaluating, and then coming together, having those conversations about what did you see, what was different, and see what it looks like, really calibrate the evaluation. And then just try to calibrate that so that we all can understand what proficient looks like, what needs improvement looks like. And it's been great. It's been a lot of good learning, a lot of good professional learning. What we're doing after vacation is we're gonna go in groups of fours into high school classrooms and then hopefully into elementary classrooms after, and look at our teachers. So groups of four of us going to classrooms, looking at the teachers, and then getting back and saying, hey, what did you see? What was, that was great. How about this? How about that? And really work off the framework that we're using for evaluation. We're doing it in a real collaborative manner. And again, the important conversation of what does it look like to you so that we're all on the same page? It's never gonna be exact because we all go in with our own biases and different eyes and a lens of what we look for. In fact, one of the things that we do is, you know, what do you look for in evaluation? There's certain things that when I, when I look for. And I walked into classrooms today. I do the same thing every time. What are the kids doing? What's the teacher doing? Is it connected? In three seconds, you make that assessment, you kinda look around, you just kinda get programmed to do that. And we're all working together to do that, and it's really been a great growth experience. Because we have different levels of folks that are, there are some people, it's their first year as a content specialist evaluating. And then I've been evaluating probably sixteen years, so I have a different lens and different experience. But we're all doing it together, which is really neat, and we're learning from each other. And it's just been great. So I just wanna give some recognition to the content specialists and the administrators who are just doing a really good job of that. I think it's important. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
What do you mean, that's all you have?
It's before the holiday. I thought I shortened it up.
This is the part of me we set aside for public input. If anybody would like to say anything. And though we know you are, if you could just...
Hi, this is Chris McQpods, Seven Curved Street, if you need that. The only thing I just wanted to ask about was the makeup of the elementary school scheduling committee because I know that in our superintendent's blog that went out before Thanksgiving, there was mention of having, having other specialists on the group. And right now, Ryan Dexter's the only specialist in the group. And I think one of the things that jumped out at me that was in the notes that we got today was the number of times that stress was mentioned that people are concerned about, and also how recess came up. So I just think it's important to have someone for, maybe it's a cows team on the group, and maybe another specialist that represents like the art group. I think that's important. So that was the only suggestion I would make about that. That's it.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Okay. Moving on, upcoming meeting, we're gonna continue to talk about the FY sixteen budget, update some new policies, and vote on the policies we reviewed tonight. So if you have any questions about the policies, make sure you get them into the policy subcommittee so that we can vote those at the next meeting. Hopefully get a recommendation on the school calendar, further developments on the elementary school day, and some further developments on the Wheelock boiler project.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so this is the time we can let you all tell us whatever it is you'd like to tell us.
Well, um...
Welcome, by the way. I'm sorry, I missed your first meeting last time.
Thank you. That's fine. How are you? Well, right now, we just finished up a fundraiser, a candy cane fundraiser. So we sold candy canes for twenty-five cents, and people could write little messages to their friends on them. And we'll hand them out tomorrow. So that's the big news.
Great.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Super. I just want to mention the chorus concert and Margot Knopf Nagel and how, the, what was it? It was the seventh and eighth grade chorus. And the seventh grade chorus, they were both fantastic. But what was particularly special about the seventh grade was the inclusion of the kids. So that was beautiful. And I just love Margot's enthusiasm and just seeing those kids up there. It's great.
Man?
No, just happy holidays and enjoy your vacation, everybody.
Yeah, I have been on the circuit going to the concerts as well, and I apologize. I missed the last meeting for the band concert. And as a former teacher of kids with disabilities, I was really struck by that as well.
Beautiful.
The kids all did a great job, but in particular, they did a great job helping all of their peers. And they, you know, kids could really express themselves in ways I think that they may not have been able to in the past. So I thought that was terrific, so.
And the kids were so respectful of each other as well, which was just, it was moving. It really was.
Nothing else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Our next, our next meeting is January twelfth. For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, I'm Richard DeSarg, and you are watching medfield.tv.